I would.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Conference of Tuesday, May 9, 2023. Two items, one item on the agenda, I guess I'll straighten my glasses. Discussion regarding the request for proposals of the affordable housing program, rental housing program proposed for the intersection of Moff Road and Oakhurst Avenue. Ms. Lisa.
I'm going to refer to Anthony to kick us off here.
Yeah, so again, this is the property that we have targeted in for purchase. It's on the, I think it's the northeast corner of Moff and Oakhurst, as you can see on the screen. It's about five acres. We got it at a pretty good price, at underappraised value, and we're under contract. We should be closing this week on the property, so that's pretty good. So, and this is, presentation's kind of just gonna go into a little bit more depth than what you've heard before, on what we have planned for this property, how we're gonna structure it to a certain extent, and like what we're looking for when we send out the RFP to the developers. I want to give you kind of an example of what other communities have done with this type of development. For example, in Moore, I think maybe 10 years ago or so, they, there was a tornado that went through, and how they rebuilt, they did a similar project to this where they focused on affordable housing, and this is that development, it's called The Curve in Moore. It looks really nice. And then this is another, a different style. What you can see here is, it's like a duplex kind of design. I just wanted to kind of showcase that, you know, we're talking about affordable housing developments, but that doesn't mean they're ugly developments or anything like that. They do, you know, look really good, and it's what you would typically see out of, you know, normal developments, it's not much different. So, like I said, we're now getting ready to solicit developers to actually develop this property under an affordable housing regulatory scheme. So, under that, what we're looking for in this request for proposal is, we want to find qualified developers who have built and maintained and operated affordable housing before, right? This is not something, this is a very niche area, right? So we want to make sure that we find someone who's very experienced and who will serve us well when we partner with them, right? Keep in mind, I think you have to have some experience or have partnered with someone with experience to even kind of be eligible to get funded by OFA, which is the, what's that stand for?
Oklahoma Housing Finance Agency.
Gotcha. So, and, and so this is basically, if you like to think of it this way, this is an investment in the city in affordable housing, right? And it's a literal investment, if you want to think of it that way. So, how we're going to fund this project is with ARPA funds, right? So federal government funds typically, depending on how you structure loans, with ARPA funds, once you get the money back on a loan that you get using ARPA funds, those are still ARPA funds when you get those repayments back. For affordable housing, that changes, right? Because these are typically longer-term loans, so ARPA, you know, I think the federal government doesn't necessarily want to be stuck with ARPA regulations 20 years from now. So, for specifically affordable housing, they have switched the requirements so that afford, specific to affordable housing, when those loan payments are returned to us, they're free and clear of ARPA requirements, meaning that they can be used for something other than ARPA uses. However, I think it's kind of been, you know, put out there that these funds will be continued to kind of go into our evolving fund, and that's kind of what we're hoping for, to fund additional projects like this, so we can kind of keep the ball rolling, as it will, to affordable housing. And now, the ARPA requirements, because we get that money free and clear, there are some extra requirements on the affordable housing loans. For example, it must be for a term of at least 20 years, you have to have it encumbered by a certain period and then spend it by a certain period, and then you have to meet certain requirements. One of those requirements is, you have to be funded under some sort of like federal funding scheme or state government scheme, and ours that we're utilizing is the low-income housing tax credit financing. So, that is, you know, that is one of the qualified affordable housing options that ARPA recognizes. So, here's what we're looking for in terms of what it means, what this affordable housing opportunity will mean, right? That does not necessarily mean, keep in mind, that every single unit is going to be like, quote unquote, "an affordable unit," right? Keep in mind, you want these projects to kind of sustain themselves, right? And, you know, that's kind of why you have to have this federal subsidy, is because it's very hard to make affordable rents work, right, in the market. So, one of the things that is required, is going to be required of these developers, is there has to be a certain period of affordability. They may have to maintain and commit to a certain number of units being affordable for at least 30 years, right? We don't have to come up with that 30 years, that's already going to be a requirement under OFA's requirements, so we're just basically piggybacking off of what's already been done with OFA. And that's a really long time, right? And so I think that's a really good investment, and we have, you know, 30 years that we can count on, that this will be serving the community and providing affordable housing. I'm gonna let Lisa talk about the rents, because that kind of goes over my head even.
Okay.
So I'll let her explain.
Just to kind of add to what Anthony said was, that the beauty of this is, unlike the home projects that the City of Norman does, that have a period of affordability, we're required to track that. And by this being a low-income housing tax credit project, the actual compliance and tracking is going to be done by OFA. We'll just ride, ride along with them on that and work with them on that. But that's, that's kind of the beauty of this. So as far as rents, the, the tax credit rent structure is 60% and below median income is the target population we're looking for. When we spoke with you guys, gosh, it's probably been six months ago or so, there were some concerns about what the, the rent structure was. The, and so we took that a little bit further, and we were able to, by structuring it, knowing that the funding that the city is going to provide will offset some of the operating deficit that the developers will have, we are requiring that 10% of the units be affordable at households earning 30% or below median income. The Norman Housing Authority will be providing project-based Section 8 assistance, which helps the developer on that. And then, the remaining units must be affordable to households earning 60% median income, based upon the, the tax credit guidelines. And within our proposal, we're going to offer bonus points as we, as the Citizen Committee ranks these, if they actually carve out units within the total number of units that are affordable at 50% and below median income. And so, here is just kind of the, the rent structure, 30, 50, 60%, you know, a household of two at 60% is almost $40,000, and these are the current income limits. And then the maximum rents for that same household at 60% median income would be 900, or would, for a two-bedroom, would be 1107, and that does include the utilities. And utility allowances utilized determine how much of the utility cost for the units depending on the amenities.
Yes, Member.
Did we come up with these percentage numbers, or were those guidelines from somewhere else?
We, we looked at the 10% affordable at 30%, we kind of backed into that based upon what the Housing Authority felt that they could help subsidize. And then, that obviously the 60% is a regulatory by, by OFA, and just kind of as, as a perk, see if someone can come in there with some 50% and below. Talking with the Housing Authority, they felt that, that the 60% was a good number because there was, even though the HUD guidelines, as far as Section 8 assistance, are for households at 50% and below median income, she said that it's, it's kind of a two-part check as far as the 30% housing expense, that they can actually, in certain circumstances, go up to 40% depending on the household.
Okay.
Circumstances, and so she said that there still would be many Section 8 clients that could still qualify at, at the 60% rate.
And on the flip side of the coin, did we give any consideration about sprinkling in some market rate units in a development like this?
No.
I mean, just help buoy the overall development up a little bit?
Yeah. You can have, you can aggregate percentages of units to hit that, that aggregate of 60%, but we felt that, that with this project, us barely getting our feet wet with this to not complicate things of trying to track units of different income mixes that were above.
I think the only thing that I would try to steer clear of as possible is not consolidating too much of like the lowest tier of this, you know, this bracket here.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't want to create a negative situation.
Dispersed, yeah, and they, they have to have the same amenities as, as the other units.
Right. Thank you very much.
Another thing we're looking for, like, right, we want some design standards, right? We want it to look nice, we want it to fit in with the, you know, overall community. So, again, like, we're making sure that the proposers who do submit proposals, they must meet certain design criteria. So, you have to meet a minimum number of units, they have to be accessible units, they have to conform with our visibility requirements, and there's a, a longer list in the actual RFP, but we won't get into all, but, you know, keep in mind, we are also taking into account, we want this to look nice, we want the community to be proud of it, right? And we don't want to, you know, but again, we're already asking for things that are regularly provided for affordable housing. So it's not like we're asking for something they probably wouldn't have given us anyway. So, but again, we want to make that in there, we just want to set a, a baseline. And again, bonuses given for certain design elements, storm shelters, stuff like that. So, stuff that, you know, we might have to pay for on the front end, right? But again, you know, we have this money, we might as well use it, we might as well make this, you know, development the best for whoever's gonna live there as we can, while we have the money.
Yeah, the, you know, they will have to meet the 504 guidelines for the number of fully accessible units, as well as any units sitting on the first floor, we're requiring them to meet our visitability guidelines. They're required to have washer dryer hookups, ceiling fans, dishwasher's disposals, and then part of the bonus, and 60% masonry, stone on the outside, part of the bonus is that they actually provide the washers and dryers, you get extra points, storm shelters. And then again, if they have units that are affordable at 50%.
So, now that, you know, I've kind of described, like, you know, this can be thought of like as an investment, I do want to kind of touch on like protecting that investment, like what safeguards that we've kind of baked in on, right? Luckily, a lot of these already exist, because they're already going to have to follow OFA's guidelines, reporting, all of that stuff, right? So, these are already kind of baked in there. And part of, you know, what they're gonna have to show is, have you ever had an affordable housing project that you had to, that defaulted, or that had to be taken over, or anything like that, because you didn't meet the requirements that OFA set? So we want to make sure, again, that these developers have a history of consistently meeting those requirements. And that's why it's important, you know, to choose these experienced developers, because, you know, this is their bread and butter, right? This is their, usually their business, so they know all of it, right? It's not something for someone who's never done it before to come in and do it. And we've also, you know, we have additional protections that will be baked into the agreement that we have with the developer, right? And how we're going to kind of invest in it, right, those long-term loans, and so we're also gonna have loan documents, loan agreements that will also protect us in the event that, you know, we've ever had like a default or anything like that, or they can't pay. So again, that will also be included. Keep in mind, so some of those protections specifically that I want to touch on is, again, that affordability period, right? We're not gonna go through all this process, loan them the money, and then five years later saying, okay, these are all now market rents, right? That's not gonna happen. Right? We're also gonna have, you know, structured in there for when they are going to repay, at what event, like, let's say that you are no longer meeting your affordability requirements, right? Then, loan becomes due and payable, right? So, you know, we want to make sure we have the hammer in there, because we want to ensure that this is an asset to the community. And also, they have to meet certain benchmark requirements before we loan out any funds, to make sure that we're not loaning the funds and then the project falls apart.
What about maintenance? When we talk about maintenance, is, are there agreements as to them keeping those in?
Yeah, that is all tracked by OFA.
Okay.
Yeah, it's required up even. As, as they, they develop these, these proposals, there will have to be, there's a pro forma that's done, that, that OFA, we will review as part of ours, but as part of the application that makes sure that there's adequate funding for reserve replacement and rent reserves and things like that, where the property does operate in, in a positive manner, which allows for that extended period of affordability.
So, and, and that's kind of where we're at, at this point, getting, getting you up to speed on what we've been working on so far, and here's kind of what the RFP process is gonna look like. We're going to tomorrow, publish the RFP, put it out there and start getting it distributed to these developers. Lisa here is gonna go to the OFA meeting tomorrow, so we're actually on their agenda to talk about this opportunity. So all of the, you know, developer, developers who are at that meeting are gonna hear about it, they're gonna get a copy of it. And I think there's already some excitement that has been generated for this RFP, right? We're also gonna create a selection committee, I think, Lisa, you may have already done that. And we're gonna then kind of get them up to speed on what the selection process is gonna look like. We're gonna have a meeting with OFA. We're actually using their underwriting standards to grade the developers who are submitting applications, so we have a meeting set up with them to learn more about their underwriting standards, so we can accurately, you know, judge these developers and see who's gonna be the most successful. And then, once we select them, after that selection process, we will contract and get into negotiations with that developer, which will come back to you, and you will approve the developer agreement and all of the other related agreements. And then, we've also included that there will be a zoning process that the city will help with, and we will rezone the property, so it meets their needs.
Yeah. Currently, the property is zoned as a pod that will be rezoned as a pod based upon the proposal that is selected. We left it open to the developers. One thing that we have learned through this process is that each developer kind of has their own product that they're comfortable with, whether it's multifamily or duplexes. And so we just stated the minimum number of units, which was 74, 75, and then they give us what their proposal is, along with their pro forma and their underwriting and their market analysis and all of that. So it'd be, technically, we're using the previous application packet that OFA had in January. There's no guarantees that'll be the packet in next January, but we're using that as the foundation of the proposal they're giving to us, so.
So, the selection committee and the selection process, can you speak to who might be on the selection committee and how the process will go?
Kevin Hopper, who's a commercial banker at First United, Karen Canavan from the Housing Authority, to understand the rents and the distribution of units, and then Lee Hall has agreed to serve on it, kind of as the community sentiment and overall picture of the, of the project.
The commercial banker, does he have, he has ties with Norman Housing Authority too, right?
He serves on the CHODO Board, the Community Housing Development Board.
And then the selection process will be for those affordability and design components you were talking about, like storm shelters or?
We, we will look at, at the package that they provide us, and in the RFP, we have ranking criteria that's been established on awarding points, and then basically, the committee will be somewhat educated by OFA on their underwriting standards, and then staff and the De Bruylers, the consultants, have been working with us on that. We're there to answer any questions they may have, or find more information that they, they think is lacking. And so, you know, with an RFP, it's, it's, it's unlike a bid, it's kind of a work-in process of how you, you can't really compare apples to apples on, on something like this. You know, if it's, if it's duplexes is one thing, it's multifamily is another. And then, as, as part of it, you know, we have, the city will be offering a 30-year loan at 3%.
Thirty?
Twenty, twenty year at 3%,
Or something similar to?
Which is substantially below market rates, which will bring their costs down, but will help to provide additional funding and capital for the extras that we are asking for, and it makes the project cash flow much better.
Thank you.
And kind of to go a little bit more in detail about one of the things, we're, you know, I think there are four main criteria we're looking, we're gonna grade them. It's previous experience, you know, their qualifications, the actual design itself, right, and how good it looks, does it meet our needs as a community, so on and so forth. Then we have the financials, is it actually gonna cash flow? Do we think that this is like a actual feasible project? And then finally, the bonus points on who can kind of give the little extras that we're looking for.
Guys, right.
The property is currently zoned as, as a pod. Was that for a multifamily?
It was a, I think it was a 70-unit senior apartment that never went, so we're really not increasing the number of units substantially, and of course, when it comes back, since it's yet less than five acres, it'll come forward as a spud. It was from the early 2000s, I believe, '97, '98, I think is when it was originally zoned.
So for the neighborhood's sake, something could be developed there right now that is multifamily apartments. This could end up being less intense than that, potentially, as far as it could be duplexes and not.
We, we asked for a minimum of 75 units.
So maybe the same number of units, but it might not be like multiple stories, it could be.
When we originally laid this out, Richard McCown helped us, and we shoehorned about 80 duplexes in there. And so we know it can be done, but the question is, do we want to do that?
Councilmember, go ahead, please.
Hey, are these loans, the seed loans, are they gonna be assumable? Is that within ARPA guidelines? That ever becomes an option?
Like, can we, like?
Can we sell them?
Sell them, yes. I don't know. I would have to look at that. I would assume probably not. I don't know, but I can research that. But that would be a good thing to know.
Thank you.
I mean, obviously, we're probably gonna put in the contract that, in the event that it is, that we probably were gonna retain that, right?
Okay.
Put them on notice. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Do we still on the RFP duplexes or multifamily, or is it, okay?
Yeah.
Do we include triplexes and quads in there at all?
We, yeah, if they want to come forward with that, yeah, it's, yeah, it's whatever model that they want.
Sure, we're not limiting ourselves too much. Okay, for sure.
And, you know, the concept of having this program established that would revolve dollars back into the fund to really expand your capabilities without competing for your discretionary general fund dollars, they say sometimes it's better to be lucky than good, and that wasn't by design, that was just a, a, a byproduct of using these dollars for this particular purpose. So, we appreciate the homework that Lisa and Anthony have put in on the subject, because I think just taking this action, it does put Norman in a, in a unique place to have funding, so we can solve problems when we've got, you know, a bad property owner and we need to address it without, you know, just dumping people out on the street. Council, I think, will have a lot more opportunity to be strategic going forward, and anytime you can solve these problems with, you know, a bucket of federal money and not, not wean a new program under your general fund, that's a real win.
Well, we have, we have to really thank the De Bruylers on this, because they, they pretty much steered the ship for us, and they brought up a very good point. You know, I think when the, when the council first started looking at the ARPA funds for affordable housing, it was primarily thinking that we would just provide funding to a developer to help incentivize them to do this, but they brought up a good point, that if it is a grant, let's say we have that $6 million automatically, that $6 million is now taxable to them, so it's only worth about half of what, what it was. And given the way the market is going with interest rates and stuff like this, and what the De Bruylers said, this is, this is certainly an enticement, so.
And it's a win-win, too, I think, it, you know, it, the city gets it back, I mean, arguably, we have greater value in what we get back than what we kind of give.
Plus, we get a development.
Yeah.
We don't get the development, the community gets the development.
How private-public partnerships are supposed to work.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Do y'all have anything for the De Bruylers? They're here, they, they understand this stuff, they more than Anthony and I do.
Thank you for uncovering that rock, turning that over and, yeah.
Well, I think it's great what you guys are doing, because we're not aware of any other communities doing it. Initially, we kind of just did some inquiries with developers about what would interest you to come to a city, and the package that you have, I think, is very appealing to the developers, especially right now, because I think what y'all need to know is the market. I talked to a syndicator, these are the people that buy those tax credits, and their investors are very dry right now. So what Anthony said about getting an experienced developer is critical, because they're the ones that are gonna be able to access the investor dollars. Somebody new they are not gonna invest in, not right now, because of the market, and that you guys are a large city, is another big plus for you.
You have the opportunity to, with the repayment of the funds, I, I see the seeding of a local housing trust fund at some point in the future, which would be huge. Municipalities in this state don't do that. Outside this state, that is a really commonplace structure for financing affordable housing. So, it's a super opportunity to wash some federal money and use it in the future.
Leading from the front.
That's right. Just to follow up on that point, what steps or actions can we take as a council to kind of build up this fund over the years? I mean, I don't want to say it's an annual line item that we're putting money into the pot, but, open to ideas, just curious, how we grow this?
Well, I don't know if we've had that conversation at the staff level to talk about, one, investment strategies, and, two, opportunities for formulas to continue to add value. The cost of construction goes up every single year, and, and your dollar over time, even if that $6 million kind of stays intact, it'll buy you less every single year, unless there is an opportunity to grow it also. If you let staff discuss that, it's staff tomorrow, we'll kick that around and, and see what we can come up with, and, you know, during budget conversations is an appropriate time to strategize on that particular issue.
Perfect, appreciate it.
Anything else?
Well, we'll proceed on the timeline as laid out by Mr. Parenton and Ms. Craig, and we'll get that out on the field and, and let you know what kind of response we get from the marketplace.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Keep it a good word.
Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting of May ninth, 2023. Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Schuler.
Here.
Councilmember Grant.
Here.
Councilmember Tortorello.
Here.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Peacock.
Here.
Mayor Heikala.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item one, approval of the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of February twenty eighth, 2023, and City Council's special meeting minutes of April thirteenth, 2023. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to approve the minutes. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the minutes passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number two, this is proclamations. There are seven proclamations, by the way, so settle in, grab your blankie. It's just gonna be that way. A proclamation proclaiming May ninth through twenty seventh, 2023, as Public Works Weeks in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am, I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming May ninth through May twenty seventh, 2023, as Public Works Week in the city of Norman. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Norman, Oklahoma. And, whereas these facilities, infrastructure, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And, whereas it is in the public interest of the citizens, including young people, in the city of Norman to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and the public works programs in their respective communities. And, whereas the city of Norman Public Works Department will celebrate Public Works Weeks by recognizing their employees for their outstanding support of the goals of Public Works on May tenth, educating local schoolchildren in the aspects of Public Works operations on May eighteenth, and volunteering time to beautify a local public space on May twelfth. And, whereas the year 2023 marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, be it now. Therefore, I, Mayor, City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby designate, May ninth through twenty seventh, 2023, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees to recognize the substantial contributions that they make to protect our national health, safety, and quality of life. Recognize Sean O'Leary. Are you here, sir? Yeah. To accept the proclamation. Do you want me to come down there?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I got the message, I'll be brief. Thanks for letting us go first, appreciate that. I'm gonna get right to my, my job tonight. You heard about all the great things our staff is doing. We, we appreciate all the work, and we enjoy being out in the community and our schools, and so on. But tonight, it is my privilege to introduce a special guest who has an award for the city of Norman. Mr. Stan Brown and his wife Cynthia flew in this morning from their home in North Carolina to be with us tonight and tomorrow for another event. They're sitting right back here, and Stan will join me here at the microphone in a moment. Stan is the immediate past president of the American Public Works Association, and that's kind of his capacity tonight here. You'll hear more about that in a moment. Stan is a thirty-four-year veteran of municipal government as a public works director and a city manager, recently retired as city manager from Oakwood, Georgia, so spent a lot of his career working in Georgia. Stan is also a retired lieutenant colonel in the U.S. Air Force, so a civil engineer from many years back and someone who understands us very well. Stan, I'll bring Stan up now, and he will have a special presentation for, for you all, and particularly for three city departments that he's gonna talk a little bit more about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. It is a little bit different being in a city council meeting on this side of the podium as opposed to being up there with you.
Well, welcome.
I actually kinda like it, I'll say that. It's kinda nice. But, also, I will mention that I did have an opportunity to serve as a public works director in Athens, Georgia, which is the host community of the University of Georgia. And so, I see a lot of similarities between the host, or the, sort of the town-in-gown relationship that you have between universities and, and city government, and I applaud you for all the things you're doing here. It's a beautiful community. We, we got in just today, but we're, we're looking forward to seeing more of it tomorrow as well. Yeah, tonight, what I wanted to do is just really celebrate for you the, the accomplishments of the accreditation and the achievement by your public works department, under the leadership of Director Sean O'Leary, your utilities department under the leadership of Director Chris Mattingly, and your Parks and Recreation Department under the leadership of Director Jason Olson. Also wanna recognize the outstanding efforts of your accreditation manager, Amy Shepherd, and she has been really just great as far as hosting us in here and making all the arrangements for us to be here tonight. When we talk about accreditation, it, it really is a mark of professionalism that indicates that your public works agencies have made a commitment to continuous improvement in the delivery of public works operations and services. Accreditation recognizes an agency's policies, procedures. Your practices have been evaluated by experienced professionals that have really measured your, the way you operate against international standards and, and practices. And I would say that in the challenging times we've had over these last three or four years with COVID and everything else that's been going on in our country, I think it's a, it's a phenomenal accomplishment to be able to put forth the effort. It may seem like an easy thing that, you know, we do public work services. It's those services that often are kind of accomplished by the unsung heroes that make things happen day in and day out. I always like to say they make normal happen in your community, and that's really what they do. But to continue to do that and be able to stay on top of all their practices, their policies, and make sure that they're doing it as true professionals, and set the tone really for other communities to follow. Some of the benefits that you have as an accreditation city is increased efficiencies, improved processes, better succession planning, because really you've got a guideline of how to continue the operations that you're doing. you've got a guideline of how to continue the operations that you're doing. Professional recognition among your peers, and continuous improvement. Also attaining accreditation really helps you with your trust and your professionalism and your accountability with your citizens. They know, just like you have in public safety, where you have accreditations for fire departments, police departments, public works is right there along with it. That your city has stood up. In fact, you're one of only two cities in the state of Oklahoma that has been able to achieve this accomplishment. During the fall of last year, our evaluation team came in, and they looked at 177 practices and found that your public works and your utilities department and your parks and recreation are all in full compliance with industry standards. And that may seem like a, well, it should be that way, right? Well, that's 177 things that creates an opportunity for a slip-up. And so that really just shows commitment and dedication on your staff. And to have three departments to come in like this and do the accreditation and do the re-accreditation, because this is your third re-accreditation. I mean, it's really a major accomplishment. Our accreditation council at the American Public Works Association awarded the re-accreditation status for the city of Norman Departments of Public Works, Utilities, and Parks and Recreation back in January. And this is the third time, as we've said. Your initial accreditation was back in 2010. So this comes up every four to five years. You end up going through this process to make sure that you're up to standards. The only other city in Oklahoma is Edmond. They are, but from my information I've gathered, it looks like Norman was the first, and then Edmond came after that. So I think you've set the tone for many other cities to follow, and hopefully they will. Currently, throughout the North America, we have 189 accredited organizations, and they come out of 154 different cities. So for you to have three different groups out of your city is, like I said, is phenomenal. So just wanna congratulate you on a job well done. And again, it's an honor to be here with you and very proud of what I see in Norman, Oklahoma. And your city has been a real supporter of the American Public Works Association for years. You really are the leader in this part of the country. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Let's take a photo.
All right, item number two, a proclamation proclaiming Sunday, May 20th, 2023, is Kids to Parks Day in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Saturday, May 20th, 2023, is Kids to Parks Day in the city of Norman. Whereas, May 20th, 2023, is the Kids to Park Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually. On the third Saturday of May, and whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit the city of Norman's parks, public lands, and waters. And, whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholesterolemia. And whereas Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors, and whereas Kids to Park Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. And, whereas the city of Norman invites the public to celebrate Kids to Parks Day with a special event on Saturday, May 20th, 2023, at 12:00 PM at Rotary Park. Now I therefore, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim that Saturday, May 20th, 2023, is Kids to Park Day in the city of Norman. Jason Olson, will you come up here for that, please?
So Kids to Park Day wouldn't be anything without the kids, of course. And I have two kids here to come up and accept. One kid, okay, one kid to accept the proclamation. It's Leaf. So let's welcome Leaf.
Okay. Leaf, would you like to come up?
Hello, I'm Leaf Stefan, and I'm here to talk about the importance of inclusive parks. I really like the parks in Norman. I've grown up playing in so many of them. I like that they give me memories that last. It makes kids happy when they go to parks, encourages us to have fun, meet new friends, and do physical activities. Inclusive parks are important for kids. They're actually a big help for a child's brain development. It can help bonding, joy, and more. Not only do parks help the brain, but they can also give children the chance to do fun activities that can help get all the energy out of them. Not to mention, Norman parks offer great events like movies, soccer events, concerts, and festivals. It's important that we make parks inclusive for everyone, including children with disabilities, everyone. With, yeah. Everyone, and I mean everyone, should have access to the joy that is inclusive parks. Inclusive parks, not only let children play, they can bring family and friends together. So what people in Norman should do is make inclusive parks more common so everyone can have fun.
Item number four, a proclamation proclaiming Monday, May 15th, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the week of May 14th through May 20th, 2023, as National Police Week in the city of Norman. I need a motion to accept receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and second. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been acknowledged, receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Monday, May 15th, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the week of May 14th through May 20th, 2023, as National Police Week in the city of Norman. Whereas, Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as National Police Officers Memorial Day in the week of May 14th through 20th, 2023, as National Police Week. And, whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, and hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And, whereas, members of the Fraternal Order of Police Auxiliary invite residents of Norman to participate in Project Blue Light by placing a blue light in front of their homes or a place of business during National Police Week in remembrance of those law enforcement officers who gave their lives in the line of duty, and for the officers who continue to keep our neighborhoods and communities safe. Now, therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Monday, May 15th, 2023, as Police Officers Memorial Day in the week of May 14th through May 20th, as National Police Week in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of their duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of fallen heroes. Do hereby invite all citizens to attend the Norman Law Enforcement Memorial Service on Monday, May 15th, 2023, at 6:00 PM at the Legacy Park Amphitheater located at 1819 Legacy Park Drive. Sergeant Wasowski, would you like to come forward for that, please? Would you like to speak? Please.
Thank you. I'm Robert Wasowski, president of Bratcher Minor, Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 122. On behalf of the 201 members of our lodge, I would like to thank the city of Norman, Mayor Heikla, and the City Council, and all city officials for this proclamation. In 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which that date falls is Police Week. This year, National Police Week is May 14th through May 20th. The Norman Police Department has had three officers who have given the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. Our lodge is named for two of those fallen, Jerry Bratcher and Melvin Minor. And I personally worked alongside with Sergeant Dale DeBerry, who was the third. May our heroes rest in peace. May God bless the families they leave behind. May God watch over the officers protecting the streets and communities today, and may God bless the United States of America. Thank you again for this honor.
Thank you, sir. Item number five, a proclamation proclaiming the month of May, 2023, as Bike Month, and Friday, May 19th, as Bike to Work Day in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of May, 2023, as Bike Month, and Friday, May 19th, 2023, as Bike to Work Day in the city of Norman. Whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling because it is a viable and environmentally friendly form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, provides quality recreation, and helps relieve the physical strain of high gas prices. And, whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users. And, whereas the city of Norman continues to update its bicycle plan and bicycle transportation network, including several planned bicycle facilities, such as the inclusion of the Safe Bike Transportation Accommodations on the road widening project on 36th Avenue Northwest, and the continued design and construction of multimodal off-street bike paths along State Highway 9, along Flood Avenue from Robinson Street to Tecumseh Road, and along Constitution Street from Jenkins Avenue to Classen Boulevard. And, whereas the city of Norman has been designated by the League of American Bicycleists as an official bicycle-friendly community for over 10 years. And, whereas the Norman Bicycle Advisory Committee, the Bicycle League of Norman, and independent cyclists throughout our state are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all. Now, therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2023, as Bike Month, and also to proclaim Friday, May 19th, 2023, as Bike to Work Day in the city of Norman, and to encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of bicycle safety, be more aware of cyclists on our streets and highways, and invite all to ride their bicycles to Andrews Park on the 19th for an 8:30 AM rally as a show of support for bicycle use and for all reasons named herein. David Reisler, there he is. David's coming down to, transportation engineer is coming down to. There you go, sir, do you wanna speak? Okay.
Unfortunately, our Bicycle Advisory Committee chairman could not be here tonight, so you get me, one of the three ex-officio members of the Bicycle Advisory Committee. I want to thank you for this honor. And please know that the Bicycle Advisory Committee strives to make cycling a better experience for all Normanites. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number six, a proclamation proclaiming the week of May 8th through 12th, 2023, is Economic Development Week in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and second. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the week of May 8th through May 12th, 2023, is Economic Development Week in the city of Norman. Whereas, the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development and organization dedicated to serving economic developers. And, whereas, the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services, and research, in-depth publications, public policy advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Organization Program, the Certified Economic Developer Designation, and the Entrepreneurship Development Professional. And, whereas, economic developers promote economic well-being and the quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And, whereas, economic developers stimulate and incubate into entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And, whereas, economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public and private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a wide variety of other institutions. And, whereas, economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions. And, whereas, economic developers work in the city of Norman within the state of Oklahoma. Now, therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of May 8th to May 12th, 2023, is Economic Development Week in the city of Norman. May 8th to May 12th, 2023, is Economic Development Week in the City of Norman, and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and making lives better. And I don't see Lawrence here. Crystal Romanation is here to accept. Would you like to speak first?
Quickly, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I apologize, Lawrence McKinney was unable to make it, so you are stuck with me also. In the proclamation, we heard the words "quality of life," and in economic development, quality of life is a concept that we hear often. And I wanted to just share with you that the quality of life has a lot of different indicators. There's jobs and housing, healthcare, education, arts and culture, infrastructure, there's also crime and taxes. And so as part of Economic Development Week and in conjunction with the One Norman Visioning process that we have going on right now, we've invited Quint Studer to come back to Norman and speak to us, and I would like to invite all of City Council, as well as the community, to join us tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM at the National Weather Center. This event is free of charge, and everyone is welcome, so I hope to see many people there. And on behalf of the Norman Economic Development Coalition, I appreciate this proclamation recognizing this week as Economic Development Week, and thank you very much.
Thank you. A proclamation proclaiming the week of May 7th through May 13th, 2023, is National Travel and Tourism Week in the City of Norman, Oklahoma. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of that proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Council members, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the week of May 7th through 13th, 2023, is National Travel and Tourism Week in the City of Norman. Whereas the travel industry fuels every industry and will continue to be an essential part of the City of Norman's economy, development, and workforce. And whereas travel is an economic powerhouse for every state and destination across the country with an economic output of $2.6 trillion in 2022, supporting 1.5, excuse me, supporting 14.5 million American jobs. And whereas travel spending supports vibrant and safe communities in the City of Norman and across the country by generating $84 billion in state and local tax revenue in 2022 to support essential services such as education, emergency response, public safety, and more. Whereas travel enables success for all industries, including manufacturing, agriculture, defense, healthcare, and more, by driving sales growth, innovation, education, and operations that move our economy, our nation, and the City of Norman forward. And whereas travel and tourism produces $165 million in travel spending, $6.2 million in local tax revenue from tourism, and 2,800 tourism employees in Norman, and is the third-largest industry in the state of Oklahoma. And whereas the travel industry cannot recover without the full, the full return of leisure, business, and international inbound travelers. Increasing travel to and within the United States drives America forward to a more prosperous future. And whereas the travel industry's success will grow the City of Norman's economy and workforce since prior to the pandemic, small businesses accounted for 60% of leisure and hospitality employment. Whereas travel is an essential industry, and we must continue to communicate that from growing travel leads to economic growth, benefits businesses, and fosters mutual understanding. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim May, the week of May 7th through 13th, 2023, is the National Travel and Tourism Week in the City of Norman, and urge the citizens of the City of Norman to join City Council in recognizing this critical role that this industry plays in Norman. Mr. Dan Scham, would you like to come forward, please? Sir? Do you want to speak?
Speaker.
There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's always fun for me to come up and recognize this week, tourism, as you heard, being the third-largest industry in the state. We wake up on the Visit Norman team excited every day to come market Norman to visitors. This is our 30th anniversary of doing that, and so it's an even more special year for us in celebrating National Travel and Tourism Week. So thank you for the recognition. There are exciting times ahead in Norman, and the next 30 years are going to be even better. So thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Item number eight. A proclamation proclaiming the week of May 21 through May 27, 2023, is Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Norman, Oklahoma. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, and second, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. A proclamation of the Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the week of May 21 through 27, 2023, is Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Norman. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, as members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illnesses or injury. And whereas emergency medical service teams consist of emergency medical technicians, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, paramedics, firefighters, educators, and administrators who engage in hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas the citizens of Norman benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly-trained individuals, and to value the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers. And whereas injury prevention and the appropriate use of the emergency medical services system will help reduce national health, healthcare costs annually. Now, therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through 27, 2023, is Emergency Services Week in the City of Norman. Mr. Kyle Hurley, would you like to come forward, please, sir? Would you like to say something?
Yes.
Yes. Have it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Kyle Hurley. I'm the Director of IMSTAT. I'm seventh proclamation, so I will be quick. We really appreciate the city honoring us for the emergency medical technicians, the 130 EMTs and paramedics that I have. And so we, we ran over 30,000 calls for service this last year, which is the highest that we ever have. And so with a lot of the Norman Regional Inspired Health projects that we've had going on, especially with the Norman Regional Nine Facility, which, as you all know, opened up October of this last year, we've all been busy. And so, and right there in the middle of it are the EMS personnel who are moving people, you know, between campuses. So we don't want people to have to worry where they have to show up, just call us, and we will figure it out. And so it's just such a great town to work in, collaborating with our public safety partners, with Norman PD, OU PD, OU Fire, Norman Fire, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office, the great ladies and gentlemen that we have down in our dispatch area, as well as council leadership, as well as, you know, with our hospital leadership as well. So, and then also, as I was listening to all the proclamations, I was doing a mental Gantt chart, you know, in my mind. I'm like, where do we line up with all this? So we're at the very end of the month, so, and congratulations to all the city departments that have received accreditation. And so, and just to let you all know, we are in the final stages of also pursuing accreditation for IMSTAT, which would make us one of four in the entire state that would have that, and we would be amongst the 1% of all EMS services in the entire country that would have accreditation. So we believe that that steps up our standards so that we can provide better care to the citizens of Norman. Thank you.
Thanks. It's time for council announcements. Councilman?
Yes, sir. Just a few quick ones. First, I'll say I know why all these proclamations got issued. I've almost finished my orientations with all of our departments, and I can say without a doubt, there is not a organization, a company anywhere in the world that wouldn't kill to have the employees that this city has. I mean, our leadership is absolutely amazing, and like I said, I am very proud to be up here and getting to work alongside all of you. Number two, I want to say congratulations to all the young ladies here in Norman who completed the Girls in the Run program this last weekend. I have two girls that were in the program, and what that is, it's a national organization that I think every public elementary and middle school here in Norman participates in, is open from third to eighth, third to eighth grade. And it was a 12-week program. They get mentored, life lessons, do a lot of running, and that all culminated this weekend in Bricktown with a 5K. So to all the girls that did that, great job. Next, today is National Fentanyl Awareness Day. It's a problem that's sweeping our country, and I was speaking to an individual that I've become real good friends with. He's a homeless gentleman that lives here in Norman, and he broke down in tears to me last week because he's had two friends that have died from fentanyl and heroin overdoses in the past few weeks. And so it's, it's a big problem. So if you know somebody that's suffering, you gotta be there for them, and we have to figure out ways to get them to help. And lastly, to go with that, Country Road, which is a recovery program, they're based out of Tecumseh, but they serve our area, they're having their grand opening on May 13th at 4:30. And I've talked to the Director of Admissions and Outreach, his name is Andrew Laboon, and he has assured me that we here in Oklahoma have 4,400 beds available for those suffering from substance abuse issues. So if you know somebody that's suffering, get with me, call, call this gentleman, email me, and I'll give you all the information, because there's help available. So we just have to be there for them and get, figure out a way to get all of these people to help.
All right. So as everybody can tell, May is quite a busy month. There's so many awesome things happening. I just want to make some highlights of some of the proclamations that we just hear, heard. I won't kind of go into too much detail since we, we did hear those on the record already. But just wanted to reemphasize the Kids to Park Day that is happening at Rotary Park on Saturday, May 20th. Just to give some more background of some of the activities that will happen at the park, the Pioneer Library will be there. I've, I've heard Nerf battles, inflatables, snow cones, music, games, and more, so it is sure to be a very fun time. Also want to highlight again the open public meeting that the One Norman Visioning Process is having tomorrow night from 6:00 to 9:00 at the National Weather Center. Quint Studer will be giving a presentation of the results of Norman's Quality of Life Survey, so I think that that will be really interesting for our community to hear and be, as a part of our visioning. Want to highlight two opportunities to do the Norman Streetwise, I guess, activity event that the Neighborhood Alliance is putting on. Those will happen Thursday, May 11th, and Thursday, May 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And this is an opportunity for members of the public to meet with department heads, different entities within the city, to kind of ask more questions about the running of Norman and kind of get that face-to-face opportunity. I heard that previous events have gone really well, and people have walked away with some more insight, and now is your opportunity to talk to all of our fabulous staff that we've already heard about accreditation tonight. Election, it is election, an election day today. Typically, we have time, but the polls have closed, so hopefully y'all went out and voted on the increase of our hotel motel tax to benefit Visit Norman and the Norman Arts Council. Also want to highlight, then, in a month, we also have another election, so June 13th, there will be an election for a water rate increase for the city. The City Communications Department is putting together information that will go out to citizens and has also contacted council, so we are working on getting public meetings scheduled for members of the public to come and learn about what is going to be on the ballot next month. Let's see here. I think the final thing that I have on my list here is that it is graduation weekend coming up for the University of Oklahoma. So as you know, there will be a ton of kind of families descending on our community once again, so be patient with our out-of-town guests, and congratulations to our graduates.
Councilmember?
Yes, I would just like to echo, congrats to Public Works, and also a happy 30th anniversary to Visit Norman. To echo the guest tax, I pulled it up, it looked like it was leading, hope it stays that way. I want to give a shout-out to Norman Music Festival and Norman Pride. I heard overall positive things, very successful events. Again, with Streetwise, that is coming up. They've asked Neighborhood Alliance for folks to register ahead of time. Dinner is provided, but you do have to register, and you can do that through na cok.org, through their community workshop and event signup. Also, we have Norman Arts, Art Walk this weekend, too, so hope to see some folks out this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember?
I have no announcements.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, well, Mayor, I think you got your steps in tonight. Well done. Take, take a rest now. But those were really important proclamations for quality of life, public safety, public health, very important. I'm hearing myself, and I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. That just sounds so lovely. Okay, I want to thank those who turned up for our sudden wilderness cleanup on Saturday. We even had a guest appearance with Judge Tupper, so you should all feel bad that you weren't there, and he was. It was great because people brought their kids, so it's a community thing, and teaching, you know, servant leadership to your children, I think, is super important. I want to resound the sentiments that I hope our hotel tax passes tonight. Good luck to us, Norman. And then Happy Mother's Day on Sunday to all mothers out there. It's a tough job, it's a great job, and you can't pay anyone to do what we do for free. So Happy Mother's Day.
Councilmember?
Thank you. I just want to also congratulate our city staff on the wonderful work that we are able to accomplish in this city. As evidenced, we're known for leading the way in the state of Oklahoma, and I think the comments tonight about our city staff and our departments just further shows that we set the standard in Norman typically on how things should be done. Also want to thank the organizers of Norman Music Festival and Norman Pride for putting on really wonderful events. I had a great time at both of them. It looked like everybody that was there was having a great time. Outside of Friday night of the music festival, when it was really cold and raining, some of us braved it and made it through, but other than that, it was a really great time. Not really, I didn't hear of very many problems, no real big problems at all. And so really proud of that in our community, and looking forward to next year's festivals. And also want to remind everybody that the May Fair is coming back next weekend, I believe, and then Jazz in June, in June. So a lot more events coming up in Norman, the city of festivals, so definitely encourage you all to get out and attend those and support those local events. Also want to encourage everybody to participate in the budget process. We've got the final budget vote coming up on June 13th. And just so everybody has an idea, so this book is the City of Norman Budget Book, so about a $270 million budget. And so every city department, every dollar that's- And so, every city department, every dollar that's spent for every department is in this book. You can find this online. It's very accessible. I think the city will make you a paper copy if you really want one. So, if you're interested in knowing how the city, how the money in the city of Norman is spent for each department and what it's spent on, definitely encourage you to take a look at that. Feel free to ask us any questions about the city budget. If you have any suggestions for amendments to the city budget that you would like to see us consider, I would encourage you to send those to us as soon as you can. But June 13th will be the final vote on the city budget. So, I'd encourage you all to attend and bring any comments or questions that you might have or suggestions. And also remind you that that process begins every November, really. It's all-year-round. But for the council, we begin the budget process in November, and we have basically monthly meetings throughout the process until it culminates in the June 13th vote. So, I encourage all citizens that are interested in the city of Norman's budget to get active starting in November and really follow that process along so that we can make sure the city budget accurately reflects the values of the community. And then also encouraging everybody, I hope you voted today, took the opportunity to cast your vote, and would encourage you to get ready to vote again. We've voted every single month this year so far in Norman. But on June 13th, we will have another public vote on a water utility rate increase. It will be the first one in nine years. And the last one before that was 2006, and the last one before that was 1999. So, just to say that we've had two approved water rate increases since 1999. So, like I've said many times, most cities raise those rates every single year to keep up with operating and maintenance costs. But in Norman, it requires a public vote, and we often will wait until it's kind of a dire need before we'll propose it to voters. It's hard to ask voters to increase their monthly bills for anything, I've discovered. So, you know, it's tough times for a lot of folks. And so, we wouldn't be asking if we didn't absolutely need it. And I would encourage you all to get registered, update your registration, and put on your calendars to vote on June 13th for the water utility rate. And then also, I think that, yep, that's all I had, actually. Thank you very much.
Councilmember?
Yeah. So, like most meetings, all of my announcements have been covered by the time it gets to me. I'll just go ahead and echo Councilman Foreman's comments and thank everybody that showed up for our cleanup effort at Sutton Wilderness. It really was a great turnout. We made quick work of that area. And I highly encourage everybody to join us next time because you will find it's really rewarding to go out there and pick up your community. So, thanks.
Mayor has done it. It's fair, I'll start at this end next time. All right. Next item on the docket is Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda to know that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that items nine through 27 be placed on the consent docket. I need a motion to place items nine through 27 on the consent docket.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. The motion on the floor is to place items nine through 27 on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to place items nine through 27 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent docket.
Can I make a comment?
Pardon?
Can I make a comment?
Oh, please make.
I just wanted to, I guess, divert our attention to all of the items that are on first reading ordinance tonight. So, if you are interested in what is going to be coming in subsequent city council meetings, this is where you will see those. So, these are where, like our zoning cases, things that we'll be voting on. So, we have a first reading to kind of let the public know, to let council know, here are the things that you're going to be voting on in next meeting. So, we have quite a few things tonight that are listed under that first reading. So, just kind of an education to the public that that is how you know what will be coming forward in the next meeting. And those are the things that will typically be off of consent that we will be considering that members of the public will have an opportunity to speak on.
Anything else? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
To approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Non? The motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast. The consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Non-consent items. Item number 28, public hearing for the proposed fourth-year action plan for the 48th-year Norman Community Development Block Grant application, which includes the 2023 Home Program totaling $1,424,424. 400, never mind, 424, will be submitted to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. I can't talk anymore. Ms. Lisa Craig, would you come forward? Oh, never mind. I need permission, please. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Our motion on the floor is to open the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to open the public hearing passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am.
Public hearing is now open.
Is it not coming up?
Okay. Lisa Craig, CDBG Grants Manager. It's that time of year that I come before you to talk about the activities we have planned going forward for both the CDBG and the Home Investment Partnership programs. As you're aware, the programs that we operate under are guided by our consolidated plan. Every five years, we go through a year-long planning process where we set priorities based upon anticipated funding that we expect to see from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the five-year plan is then codified in a series of one-year action plans, this being the Year Four Action Plan. The goals that were set forth in the consolidated plan were rather simple. Maintain an adequate supply of permanent quality affordable housing. Assist special need populations with social service and housing needs. Reduce homelessness and continue commercial and residential revitalization efforts within low-income neighborhoods. Every budget item that we have within these two programs are codified within these goals that were stated back in 2020. This year, the plan is our fourth year of the five-year plan, which will take us through June 2025. The Annual Action Plan will take us through June 2024. It sounds funny saying that, but it's here. So... So, the CDBG Fund, Community Development Block Grant Fund, the city of Norman received $941,659 for this year. It's an increase of a little over $14,000. This is a formula allocation based upon the appropriation from Congress to these programs. And so, it has to meet one of three goals: decent housing, suitable living environment, or meet an economic opportunity. The Home Program, we received $458,765, almost a $28,000 increase. And this is dedicated solely to affordable housing opportunities for low- and moderate-income households. So, since 1978, when the CDBG program was funded, the city of Norman received over $53 million from the federal government for these programs that have been spent here in Norman. So, to give you a little bit of an update on the CARES Act funds, we received multiple allocations, one from HUD and one from the Department of Commerce totaling almost $3 million. Currently, we still have funding left for rental assistance, some startup assistance for homelessness, the Housing Navigator Liaison, little bit of admin money. And then from the Department of Commerce funds, we have expended all of our rental assistance funds, but the program still continues under the HUD funding. And we have funding for childcare assistance, which we are working with the Parks Department to provide scholarships to summer activities for low-income citizens of Norman. And we're working with multiple nonprofits on the Nutrition Assistance Program to be able to allow additional people to participate in those programs. So, the CDBG and Home Programs, they are pretty much influenced and required to be influenced by the citizens of Norman. We have an established citizen participation process that staff and council review every five years. We have a committee of 20 concerned citizens that get to listen to me drone on and on for about a year, once a month, talking about the different programs that we have and getting their input on how we can tweak policy changes within the regulations to make these programs more accessible to all. We started back in July with the beginning of the Third Year Plan. We submitted our CAPR, which that is the report to HUD, which outlines every dime that was spent in this program for the previous year. Then we started having neighborhood meetings. We had a couple of public hearings for the Home ARP as well as for the CDBG program. And then the committee really got down to work talking about the programs and how they want to see them implemented within the next year. So, the meeting tonight, the council will hopefully vote to approve this plan that will be forwarded to HUD. And then, if everything boxes all get checked at HUD, the funds are available on July 1st. So, I always get the question talking about, when you say low and moderate-income citizens, the way HUD defines that is households at 80% and below median income. So, one person is 45.8, four persons is 65.5. So, all of the programs that we operate with the CDBG and the Home Program have to be qualified by an area income or an individual income. The neighborhood projects are done by area income, and the housing rehab projects are based upon the household income. Annual Action Plan that you have before you tonight is a summary of the objectives that we hope to meet this year, our citizen participation plan, the accomplishments we propose for each activity, how we're going to distribute the fund, and then, of course, the HUD paperwork, the certifications that go with that. So, of the $941,659 in the CDBG budget, we have $187,850 for admin and planning, which is below our cap, our 20% cap, $419,000 for housing rehab, $194,000 for neighborhood initiatives, and $140,000 for affordable housing acquisition. So, the target area, which I mentioned that we do a lot of these projects on what's called an area income, that, kind of hard to see here, but it's primarily the core, the core area, Robinson down to Boyd, Berry over to 12th Avenue. Those neighborhoods have been defined as having 51% of the households are 80% below median income. And so, when you look at that as a cumulative calculation, 73% of these neighborhoods right here are low and moderate income, the households are. The new program that we're going to be doing this year is called Neighborhood Initiatives. This was actually formulated pre-COVID, and then COVID happened, and we kind of put it on the shelf, and we're coming back to it now. We are going to focus on two specific neighborhoods, Robinson to Alameda, Porter over to the state land. First Courthouse Neighborhood is at the north, Original Townsite Neighborhood is at the south. And in the middle of it is what is called the EDO, the East Norman, East Downtown Norman area, the commercial area. So, our goal for this is going to be a multi-year project that we are going to work with people in the neighborhood to improve the neighborhood communications, empower some local voices, and using these tools, we're going to do some small-scale projects within the neighborhoods that the neighborhood residents will be integral in designing. Housing Rehab, which is kind of our bread and butter program, this program has been available ever since we started the program in 1975. We have about $200,000 of prior year funding available that will be rolled over for access. We do a small exterior property maintenance program that will be focused in these two neighborhoods. And then, the Owner Occupied Emergency Repair Program and the Accessibility Modification, those are available citywide based upon the income of the property owner and the renter or the renter. Acquisition of Property, we have done this the last several years with our partnership with the Norman Affordable Housing Corporation and Habitat for Humanity. This allows them to buy property, whether it's a vacant lot or an existing property, to bring it into their portfolio that is then utilized for affordable housing. They report back to us annually about the tenant mixture and the income that they receive from that. And the income they receive, they then just roll it into more projects. It doesn't come back to the city, it stays with the agency, but used for affordable housing. The Home Program, $458,765, little bit of money for administration. And the administration dollars also actually include our Fair Housing Services with Metropolitan Fair Housing. We have a contract with them to provide services on behalf of the citizens of Norman. We're required to partner with what's called a Community Housing Development Organization, CHODO. It's more of that alphabet soup that HUD does. A minimum of our 15, minimum of 15% of our home dollars has to be in partner with a CHODO. The CHODO we have certified right now has a really original name. It's called Norman CHODO. It's a, it's a special kind of nonprofit with a board of directors that is made up of a certain configuration of low-income representatives, public officials, and then the general public. They, you know, you have seen us up here talking about these kinds of projects we do, and it's obvious that $70,000 doesn't do much. But what the CHODO does is they actually partner with the Affordable Housing Corporation, which is another nonprofit. And together, they're able to vet these projects and bring them to us for participation. And so, $283,765 is dedicated for development of affordable housing. And then, with the Neighborhood Initiatives Program, we are going to offer a limited down payment assistance program for those two neighborhoods to encourage homeownership within those neighborhoods. We have spoke with the Financial Alliance of Norman, which is the group of bankers. The way the program will work is the primary mortgage will come from a Norman bank. We will partner and provide $14,999 of down payment assistance. That is calculated to where we're actually just filling the gap. That's the maximum that we can do in exchange for the households that are getting the homes, they're purchasing the home, they have to remain in the home for five years as their primary residence, and our funds are forgiven 20% each year. At the end of that five years, they can stay, they can sell, whatever. But it does provide additional stability for these neighborhoods. So, the next step is council approval of the Fourth Year Action Plan. It will be submitted along with our current consolidated plan to HUD, and the grant funds will be available by July 1st. Do you guys have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Lisa. Was the, the house that we, I think it was on Iowa Street this past year, was that house a result of this?
That was a habitat, yes.
This program?
Right. We purchased the lot, well, we provided the funds for them to purchase the lot, and then they constructed on that lot.
And now a family.
Yes.
And so, would you say this program over the years has been very successful at getting people, maybe keeping people out of poverty or keeping people from out of homelessness?
Yes.
Thank you, Lisa.
I have a question about the Down Payment Assistance Program. Is that new?
We operated a Down Payment Assistance Program about 10 years ago for several years. HUD, kind of, as they do, they kind of changed the rules that made it where it really wasn't feasible for us to do that. We have, we have kind of found a way to do it now. We, we work a lot with the city of Oklahoma City, and they have, they figured out how to do it. The Neighborhood Initiatives is the same program as the Strong Neighborhood Initiative that Oklahoma City does. And with their blessing, I stole it. I'll just be honest with you. But yes, they have a small down payment assistance program for these targeted neighborhoods. But yes, they have a small down payment assistance program for these targeted neighborhoods also, and so we're going to try that and see how it goes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I know we talked about it a little bit, but can you just tell everybody what this program has done for our Section 8 waiting list? Because I know it's lower than it's almost ever been, or that you've seen.
Yeah. Currently, it's my understanding from talking with the housing authority that I have, I have known times that the waiting list has actually been closed because they felt that it gave households false hope, that it was two years, three years long. Right now, it's about two months, depending upon how many people are turning back in their vouchers that can then be reissued. The affordable housing program in particular, we are partnering, partnering with entities that will accept Section 8 vouchers. And so that's, that's, you know, primarily what we're looking for. It's, it's not moving mountains, but we're getting a couple units each year. At the next meeting, the end of May, there'll be an agenda item to where we're going to use some of our existing home funds to buy some duplexes that have come on the market. So that contract will be coming towards you guys. And so that will be for four-bedroom units. You don't really see four-bedroom units much in the community, but these became available. And the housing authority, the Affordable Housing Board was able to negotiate them down to a, to a workable number, and so we're, we're hoping to, we're putting some money in, putting some money in to get four more affordable units in the community.
Perfect. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Are there any?
Heidi Smith, the chair of the Policy Committee.
That's where I was at. She could read my mind.
So I was here a couple weeks ago to receive a proclamation about the CDBG week, and I didn't make any comments, but I would like to comment today. First of all, I would like to thank Lisa Craig. I've been with this CDBG for seven years now, and seven years later, I really feel like I understand what she's saying when she talks. And I'm being a part of the COC and getting to read HUD documents for myself, I speak HUDs at a small level now, and I am fully convinced that she has forgotten more about the CDBG program than I will ever, ever know. Our community is incredibly, incredibly blessed to be have, to have staff that understands what she understands about HUD. Tara Reynolds also works with her. They are great. I serve on the committee, I've been one of the co-chairs of the committee, we keep adding co-chairs, there's three of us now. I can't remember if it's seven or eight years. We are, people keep saying there's an affordable housing crisis because there is. This is the one program that addresses that head-on for our city. We've got to do more, but we can't stop doing what we're doing. So I would urge everyone here, please take the free money. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. And that's all. Any final comments from council? Excellent. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to close the public hearing passes unanimously.
I'll take a motion to, I'll thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the action plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second. Motion on the floor is to approve the action plan. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the action plan passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 29, a resolution amending Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan to remove property located at 2516 Briggs Street from the Special Planning Area, Planning Area 1 designation while retaining the commercial designation. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the land use plan amendment.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Is there a representative of the applicant to make? Yes, sir.
How's it going?
Excellent.
My name's Stephen Lewis, and I own Plant Life LLC of Norman. We did prepare a, no. Okay. All right. So basically, my wife and I, we are landscape designers, and this property on Briggs Street has been kind of an eyesore for a very long time. It was a, it's zoned as of right now a residential, R1, and we are requesting it to go to C2. Everything in the area is leaning in that direction or already is. To give you an idea, it's right next to, oh, what'd they call that? It's Lindsey and I-35, Sooner Legends, yes. So, let's see. Basically, our plan with this property is to use it as our home base for our landscape company. It's going to not really take up a whole lot of the lot, so not a lot's going to change in terms of where it's located, access issues and all that. We're going to do a concrete pad, you know, to drive up, but the back of the property is basically going to be just straight landscaping, kind of highlight what we do. And our plan for future is to have a design studio so people can come by and see what we're capable of. So let's see, we got, and I apologize, guys. That's kind of a rough idea, what you would expect to see with the building that we're going to build there on the screen. It's going to kind of have a unique look to it. There's also going to be a porch area, so some wood tuns and stuff like that, but essentially, we want to make sure that everything that we're doing is inside. Why, I don't want anything outside, I kind of want everything to be inside. So when you drive, because you probably drive off the interstate, you see it. I don't want anything out, a lot of garbage, stuff like that, that's not really how we fly anyways, but that is essentially what you guys would be seeing in that area. So if you slide over, let's see what we got. So as of right now, it's a, it's zoned, like I said, residential, but it has an SP1 tag to it, meaning that it's a special area that they want somebody to come in at some point, if I'm not mistaken by this, they want someone to come in and buy the entire section right there. I'm requesting that we remove that someone has to come in and buy the entire thing. And also to go C2 versus as it is right now, R1. So on the site plan, you can see, it's, it's really not going to take up a whole lot of that lot, and the rest of that property, because it's going to be kind of cool, because when you come off of Lindsey Street, like I said, you're not going to see a whole bunch of extracurricular stuff. It's really just going to be like really pretty tree lines and, you know, probably some garden-y area stuff, if that's even a word. Okay, so, and then the 2025 land use plan that you see, you can already kind of tell, I can't really highlight it too much, but you can see all the red areas, that is commercial as of right now, and everything that I'm, that I'm aware of in that area, like I said, is tagged as commercial property. My summary, I'm trying to keep this short and sweet. Basically, what we're requesting is the removal from Special Planning Area 1. Long-term plan is for this area to be commercial, and it should not, because I've heard this question, it should not hinder future commercial development. So if someone were to come in and say, hey, I've got a bigger stick than you do, we want to basically wipe the whole area out and put something really big there, it's, they're probably going to buy me out too, to be honest with you. I mean, it is what it is. So the rezoning from R1 to C2, I have, I don't think we had any negative feedback on this. It makes a lot of sense when you see it. It's right on the interstate, very close to the interstate, and I don't think there is Norman city sewage there. I don't think there's any sidewalks, anything to that nature, it's just on that dead-end street, it's a dead area. So I'm just trying to make that area, you know, jazz it up a little bit, I guess. Let's see, what else do we have? Steve, did you have anything? I'm sorry. Got it. Other than that, like I said, we, we kind of already in that business of making things look a certain way, and my name is going to be on that property, and I would probably treat it as such. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Councilmember Schuler?
Hello again. So for everybody's, I guess, spatial awareness, this is located in Ward 2. So Mr. Lewis and I have had communication about this property prior to pre-development and all of that, and I just want to say kudos to getting me involved early in the process and really wanting to work everything. So can we, when we met, we talked about, there are some legacy R1 lots around here that you talked about. Can you talk to me about the neighbor that is immediately adjacent on that, that east side?
Yes.
I, I know that you spoke to the property owner, can you talk a little bit more about how they feel about the project and?
Of course. Yeah, so she has grandkids, and I kind of told her who I was and what we're planning for it. You know, and of course, the whole like, is it going to be noise or stuff like that? That's, that's not really, it's not going to be used for like retail style, like a lot of traffic, because it's not a high-traffic area. Like I said, it is a dead, dead-end street. My conversation with her is she's actually kind of excited because now I'm going to put up a better fence that separates her from the Briggs property, which also separates her from the interstate. So having grandkids, having the interstate right there as close by as it is, proximity, she's actually kind of, it sounded like she was happy and excited about it, to be honest with you, so.
And then when we also talked, there are very few, maybe only one or two owner-occupied properties, I guess in the R1 designation right here. So either many that are not even occupied by renters, and then some that, so that are abandoned.
Correct.
And then others that, you know, maybe have renters in them.
Yeah, yes, and it's kind of a weird, like, it's an odd number of how many just vacant lots there are over there, because they're just waiting. They're just waiting for somebody to, like I said, come in and just, you know, that's not my plan, because I have my home base here in Norman, I exclusively work out of Norman, and I, I don't really want to go anywhere. And I like to say close to home, which is west Norman, so.
So this building would basically be to house the equipment?
That's correct.
That you use for landscaping and all of that. So it'll just be, it's not going to be like a coming and going like all day, but you kind of go out for your work in the day.
All day, as you can tell.
And then come back.
I'm a little red.
And store that equipment in.
Correct.
On the property. Can you talk a little bit more about, I guess, the aesthetics, the lighting, kind of what the outside of the building and security is going to look like?
Yes, because there is a lot of foot traffic, so that's good to mention. Basically, I do a lot of landscape lighting, a lot of stuff like that. I also do a lot of Christmas lights and things of that nature. So I'll probably highlight that during those seasons, but landscape lighting will be basically year-round. I'm going to do a really pretty row of trees down, basically down that Lindsey exit. So when you're coming off of Lindsey, you'll actually see a really pretty row of trees. It'll have almost a, a nursery look to it, you know, when you go into the nursery, you're walking around and walking through those trees, it'll have that kind of vibe to it. So, but the rest of it'll be just, you know, pretty landscape, so.
I think we talked about, you're currently locating your equipment out of town is where it's?
Yeah, in Goldsby, correct. Yeah, I mean, just, it's just right outside of town, but it's still, closer is better, so.
Well, sure, as an, you know, a Norman resident, as a business that's doing, you know, predominantly work in Norman.
Right.
I would definitely like to see you, you know, occupying space that is within the kind of our city limits. So I think those are all the questions that I have right now.
I have one question for you. Usually in a warehouse or a shop or anything else, you have a bathroom. As I recall, down there on Briggs Street, all of those are, there's no sewage, as you said.
That's correct.
And there's no water either, because they're all private water wells. How are you going to solve that problem if you have to do it?
I believe, I, I think there might be water, I'd have to verify that, but there's, there definitely isn't sewage.
Okay. Chris is saying yes. He knows exactly where they are.
There is, okay. He knows.
Yeah, he does.
I would trust him way over me. But we, basically septic is what we have to do.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, we've already gone through the soil testing and all that for that. It's, it's not really going to be that type of facility, we have to put one in because how we have it zoned, but it's not really going to be an influx of people constantly. I'm not, you know, it's mainly just, hey, this is where I keep my stuff, if I want to bring clients over, have a smart board, we, you know, walk through, design, stuff like that, it'll basically be in-house. And then, like I said, gone for the day.
Yeah, and that's wonderful. I just think of the, the next use of the building, if there is a next use.
Sure.
Is, is somebody going to come on, and then that's a thing to do. Anyway, any other questions from council? Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the land use plan amendment. Did I skip his line?
No.
No, okay. Council members, you may cast your votes. Oh, she did.
Excuse me. The vote passes by a, vote, let me start over. The motion passes by a vote of seven to zero with Councilmember Foreman out of the room at the time.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 30, an ordinance rezoning property, 2516 Briggs Street from R1, single-family dwelling district to C2, general commercial district. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and second. This is a companion item to the previous item. Are there any further questions from council regarding the question? Are there any further public comments? None of them either. Are there, okay, we just did that. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
A motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 31, a resolution requesting a partial exemption from current city standards relating to 2516 Briggs Street with the advancement of the short-form plat process. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion and second. This is a companion item to the previous two items. Are there any further council questions? Okay. No comment. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Council members, you may cast your votes.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. This is time for miscellaneous comments. Do we have anybody signed up for miscellaneous comments?
We do have two signed up.
Evan?
I don't see Cynthia.
I hadn't either.
Okay, so Evan?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those proclamations, there were so many of them. I couldn't help but, you know, read them and say. I couldn't help but, you know, read them and say, yeah, that's a good proclamation, we need to celebrate those people. Proclamations, they bring our focus to things that are invisible, you know, like what Chris and what Sean do, and what Jason does, what, we take those things for granted, you know? We take electricity for granted, we take our food for granted, we take the air for granted. Gravity's working on us all the time. These ought to be daily reminders for us, you know, we ought to be reminding ourselves, ah, I've got hot water, how amazing is that? I can, I have indoor plumbing, how amazing is that? When I flip the switch, the lights come on, how amazing is that? Have you all been reading the Breath Book? You been reading it? Okay, good. It's, it's fundamental, and I think gratitude is fundamental. We need a gratitude revival. We need a gardening revival. We need a postural revival. Those are all things that we take for granted, but they can be transformative. I've seen it in my life, I know that we've all seen it, and every time we give a shout out to the police officers and M Stat, it feels good, feels good to show how grateful we are. That's one of the reasons I come. I come to show my gratitude for the sacrifices that you all are making, and, yeah, that, I know you all are going to go into an executive session, so I won't take up any more of your time, but I really appreciate what everybody does, coming to these meetings and then going home. It's not lost on me.
Thank you, sir. Action of adjourning into executive session is authorized by Oklahoma statutes to discuss pending litigation associated with Chaz Investment Group LLC versus the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn out of the council meeting and convene into executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and second. The motion on the floor is to adjourn out of the council meeting and convene into executive session. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. All opposed? I say, all right. Our motion was approved. We're, we're going to reconvene in the other room at 10 after. That'll give us a couple of minutes.